Attention everybody, the Lynn's zoning board of appeals meeting for October 15th, 2019 is now in session. Roll call please.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Ms. Curly?
Present.
Mr. Stone, Mr. Kellman?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the October 1st? Motion is made by Mr. Kellman and seconded by Mr. Wood. All those in favor, others opposed, so moved. First case is case number 9910, 44 Ocean Street. Petitioner James Meserius, trustee short trust by his attorney Daniel Cahill, to allow conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming commercial unit without the required parking spaces into a conforming residential unit without the required off-street parking spaces within an existing non-conforming building in the R4 district, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental in effect on the neighborhood. The meeting is now open for those in favor.
Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening. Members of all, it's been a long day. For the record, my name is Dan Cahill. My address is 20 Daley Avenue in the Mass. 01904. I appreciate your time tonight. I'm here with the building owner James Meserius. And we were here several months ago because there were two commercial units that we had requested that we vary for to convert to residential units. And this board granted those two variances. Now we're back for the third unit. Currently, or should say previously as of today, there was a beauty shop located in this commercial unit. The owner of that establishment has purchased a new location and they are moving their operations, and I think they have moved. They moved out to Swanwick, so now that one commercial unit is vacant. My client is looking to convert that commercial non-conforming use in R4 district to a conforming use being residential. Unfortunately, there was no off-street parking available for the beauty swan and there was no off-street parking available for the new residential unit. So we are here today asking for the variance for the required off-street parking. I can say this is a tiny little place, about 320 square feet. So we don't imagine too many people, one of them even one person, living in this space. I can tell you that from our feedback from some of the neighbors, they're very pleased with the work that's been done on the buildings. About $250,000, a dozen things have been made to date. It's a size, the interior, which is a foundation. And this building is rental. And we will include also some closet space to make sure that whoever is living there has appropriate places to store their wares.
Mr. Wood is on this case. Mr. Wood, you're on here, you're sitting on this case. Any questions to the...
I know. So the needs rebuilt into the businesses, they're going to have the parking anywhere.
They're going to have the parking for the businesses, right. And this is such a small space that the parking required on the estimation for the commercial was about two off-street parking spaces, which is the same for the other one. Which is usually where, usually it requires more for the commercial. It's a fairly small...
I'd rather have living quarters than an empty building.
Will it be off the mission to the side?
Currently, there are gigantic ink on it that will get removed. And it would be restored to more residential look. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go down there and check it out. So it looks like more of a traditional, small little covering for the roof for people coming in from out of the rain, right from the front of the door. As far as the commercial aspect, I guess. That'll be all being moved. And we've received some positive feedback from neighbors on the removal of some of the on it.
No, I've been down there a number of times and this recently, you can tell there's been a tremendous amount of work that's taken place since the petitioner began the rehab of the first two units. But the building is looking very, it's looking nice. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing seen none, we'll close the hearing for those, open it for those in opposition. Is there anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? Anyone here in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing. What is the wish of the board? Motion made by Mr. Kellman and seconded by Ms. Curly. Roll call please to grant the petition.
Mr. Wood, yes?
Present.
Mr. Wood, to grant?
Yes.
Ms. Curly, to grant?
To grant.
Mr. Kellman, to grant?
To grant.
Mr. Cole, to grant?
Yes. Petition has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Second one is case number 9911, River Burn Street. Petitioner Neighborhood Development Associates to allow construction of four buildings containing 12 residential units on a lot in the business district, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental in effect on the neighborhood. The hearing is now open for those in favor.
Good evening, Peggy Phelps, representing Neighborhood Development Associates. So, here we are. This is the third site of the GE land that Neighborhood Development Associates purchased over a year and a half ago. We're proposing to combine all the lots and to create a townhouse village, so to speak. It has 12 units of townhouse for homeownership. So I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, so he can go through the site.
We need to give you a brief summary of the site. Western half of the town is a low five hundred square feet, Burn Street, River Street. We came here for Neighborhood Development, you know, for a football house or something, eight years ago, based on the safety of the homeowner's property. There's the site. It's a half in here. It's about three, a little under 31,000 square feet. We have pride on Burn Street. We're closing a four unit building here with no vehicle access on the Burn Street. That's what we provided the parking in the neighborhood building. We thought that was tough for the owners to get out into the street because of that, because it's being, it's being so heavily trafficked. Then we proposed another four unit building in the back. The GE credit unit was over here. A little three year old building over on River Street. And a single family home unit in this location to match up with the dwelling on the corner. The access coming down into, off of River Street, into the units. Parking under here, parking there, here. Parking behind the single family unit. And parking on a two bedroom, about two acres, three unit on Burn Street. The other building will have one, one parking station in front and one in a garage under. And presently, the whole, the entire site, other than this little, our table piece down here is, is covered by the tourists. There's a whole parking lot of them, they tore down the buildings, they just paved over it. When we're done, we'll have all the green, the green space. All the buildings will have, like we do on all our sites, we put our food trees down to our front grid rate, so we eliminate all that runoff. If you show a couple, there's two live trees on the abutment property here. As you know, Peggy does a great job of landscaping, and I just showed a couple of, where I thought trees should go to kind of, kind of, in the corners of the property. But if you know she'll do a lot more landscaping than that. We do have a dumpster area, a place for snow, and a little patio for the community to sit. Each unit will have an exclusive use area behind them. About 15 by 15, or 15 by 20, that's what the units are basically. We're proposing to put a curvy, paved patio where those seniors could walk out the first floor onto a patio. In each case, so that's it.
And one more thing about the site plan. We've actually partnered with DCR for breeding the gateway. They provide us the free trees and the planting and the maintenance for up to one year. So for instance, on Minus Street, we planted over 30 trees. And on the site that we're finishing up now, which is Minus, which is rigid street and light street, we're planting over 30 trees. So, and then this will also be included in their plant for next, you know, spring or early fall to plant additional ones. Yeah, they do it really, yeah, they do the ornamentals plus the street trees.
Mr. Tremm, I just have one quick question.
Yes.
How will the occupant get access to apartment 1 to 4? If you have green going, pretty much going on around...
Well, they're going to have a split surface here. And what they do is the parking is basic and come across...
Across the lawn?
Yeah, go up to your lawn patio, come in with the car, maybe you can get into that other floor.
Well, there'll be four pathways from the parking that will lead to each, one in each individual unit, yes.
So all this green is not really going to be green?
It'll be a combination of green with pickled patios and stuff like that.
How much green is it going to be green?
It'll only be about a 12 by 12 patio. Just enough to put, you know, a table and chairs in the grill. And then between each unit, there'll be some privacy screening.
Do you go down River Street much?
Yes.
I'd like to know how all these people are going to get out on River Street to go anywhere. You'll need a traffic light up there. River Street is unable.
But on, do you want to turn that around?
Are they not going to go out on River Street?
The traffic lights up at the intersection of Blue Room Burns. That's where we felt was, even though you're any time of day, usually, and there's traffic stacked up for you. So that's why I'm beginning with any, any vehicles backing into...
Coming in or off Burn Street?
On the Burn Street.
I understand that.
River Street is narrow, but it doesn't move. You do have some traffic backing here. Usually, the times I've been in, no more than two, three, four cars. There's a, you can see right here, the back seat is just concave here and it kind of narrows downward quite a bit. And we're proposing to open that up and make better access coming through there.
Well, I sat in that parking lot, the next door, and you know how long it took me to be able to get out? Anybody let me get out on River Street? I, I just, that's why it made such an impression on me, is how these people are going to get in and out of here. Just a...
No, I, I...
The competition's definitely out a lot, you know. There's people adding a lot of people in this area. And plus, there's a bar across the street.
Right.
There's a bunch of business, body shop around the corner. Folks go in the GE, kind of to the back, Berry Park, you know. At the time, I could definitely see this bottom net.
Yeah, usually, and usually it's right about the time that the GE is getting out of work. I mean, but...
I would say on a Sunday.
I, I just said that to tell you that you typically will be there on an hour. Yeah, it is, but you know what? I, I think the whole city's like that, Jeanette, I know. I think the whole city is just...
It never entered my mind until I was there.
Yeah.
I mean, River Street is definitely the lesser of two evils. Burn Street, forget it, that's usually totally gridlocked. You'd never ever get a bill to get in out of there.
Never.
So, you know, maybe they can, they do like up at Broadway at Rich Deal, they, they say, do not, do not block the intersection, do not block the driveway or something like that, but, yeah, it's just a tough lot. Your landmark too, because the GE owns it on the, on the other side.
You know, when I was looking for this, I passed it. It was on my left hand side, going down, I could go down further. In my mind, it was way down.
I did too, yeah.
And then I couldn't find it. Then I went, I drove back and I saw my door, it was Burn Street. But when I passed the first time, I said, my God, this is such a mess. I wish somebody would do something with this. And then I went to that. That was, that was a mess.
Would there be a fence or some other green trees on, on Burn, Burn Streets? Like if you put the other plant?
Sure.
Is there a fence there alongside the road on Burns?
There's, there's a fence here. There's a giant fence here.
But what about...
What they proposed?
Yeah, right off Western Ave.
Right on Burns, is there a fence on Burns?
Right here?
Yeah. There, there isn't right now, but there will be. We, we typically always do a...
That'll be private backyard.
...take a fence and then we'll do a tree on the front lawn.
But no doors, someone's exits or anything like that?
No.
How many bedrooms?
Uh, two bedrooms.
John, you want to give him to you? He answers some of these questions?
So, so I'm looking at this, and which building is, that says Building A? Which one's Building A on here?
Building A is the building in the back. What Chuck has is number 5, 6, 7, and 8. That is the largest building. It's four units. It has the garage at the lower level. The main living floor is in the middle, and then the upper floor is the two bedrooms. We've chosen this mansard design, this style of roof, for a couple of reasons. One is that the buildings across the street on Burn Street are currently small mansard, single-family homes. And this evokes that in the same style, but also, in essence, brings the height of the building down. Because if it were the true, true three stories, the building would be much taller.
What is the elevation down?
Geez, I don't know, but I would say that it's approximately 30 feet.
Well, you definitely don't need to be exact, because they can, they can become another barriers on height, so...
Yep, okay.
And so Building B is, is this building?
No.
Building D is the building that faces out onto River Street. And then, Building D is the single-family home out on the corner. Building C is the, is the building that faces...
Can you turn that over so we can see?
Building C is the building that faces on Burns. Again, for a couple of reasons, we made that a smaller building, smaller in height, again, to fit better with what's across the street. But number two, as you described, that's the place with the worst traffic, so we decided not to put garages that open out onto, onto Burns.
So, so that's, that's, oh, that's Building C is this one here?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, C is here.
And so, so you, but you see, it, it looks like the front of the building there, but it's just going into a backyard, kind of. No, there's, there's going to be, there's got to be a fence here.
There's a sidewalk, plus a fence.
Excuse me. No, this is the front and this is the back. And they will park and enter from the side.
Yeah, so I'm, so I'm just saying, that looks like the front of the house. And then it's going to go, but there's no entrance off the street.
There's sidewalks, yeah.
So there's going to be a fence there.
Well, there would be pathways.
A privacy fence, oh, okay.
Yes.
I think that's the property line.
That's the property line. But yes, there would be pathways from the street to the front door.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's like, kind of...
No, there'll be, there'll be openings in the fence.
I mean, you have to have...
Excuse me, excuse me. One, one at a time, please. You have a question?
Well, we're going down here with a question. We've got a question down here.
Can you wait?
Yes. John Crowell, from Deer Hill Architects, 40 Lowell Street, in Peepee.
Okay, so we're just trying to figure that out, but I think that was the answer then. There will be a gate on that.
Of course, yeah, they have to have a...
I just couldn't figure that out, because it seemed like that's going to be a private backyard, but it's actually their front yard, but it's going to be used...
No, that's a good question.
There'll be gates and locks from the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, because that could have been facing the parking lot.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And then, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the building height, I think we had like 10 feet from the basement to the first floor, and then 10 feet up, and you got half the room. So you're about 20, 25, maybe 28 feet, if you take the...
On the shore?
Halfway on the...
No, it's not really halfway. I think, I think we're closer to probably 32 feet or something.
30, okay. Because I was figuring in, you know, 10, 10, and it was half in, maybe 8 to 10.
No, this is, this is a full story height, and then that's above it.
Okay.
So these are almost full height.
But the height's only measured half, from half the peak, right?
Well, if, I'm saying the 32 feet is to the peak.
But don't you measure like, you don't measure, I thought you didn't measure to the peak.
No, you measured halfway on the, on the...
Yeah.
That's what I figured, I was trying to...
Oh, okay, okay. I see what you're saying. Different cities measure it different ways.
So what's the maximum height?
36.
36.
35 is a little...
This is 36, okay.
I thought it was 35. But that's not, you're saying that's, that we don't know then, right now, I guess.
I know it's less than 35, 36, but I can confirm that. If we take halfway to the roof.
Do you have any interior drawings?
I have four plans of each unit.
And how many square feet roughly is each unit?
The dad's...
20 by 30, well, the...
The drawing of 20 by 30.
About 1,200, it's 1,200. What about the smaller rooms over here?
The smaller house is probably a little bit bigger, it's probably about...
No, not the single family. You know, on one side, you said this is a larger townhouses.
Building A.
And across the way, it's a smaller one?
In that, one of them has four units and the other one has three units.
But the units that...
Okay. The, those units are basically the same size, but they don't have this lower level, which has a garage and what I'm calling a family room on it.
But this, this, the size is here. It's smaller than the size is here.
Uh, one foot smaller in width.
Well, this says 32 and this says...
36.
36.
That's because on one of them, it's measuring the bump out. It's measuring from the bump out to the back, while the other one has measured from the inset to the back.
So the two bedrooms in this, this here town is the same size as the two bedrooms over here?
They're one foot narrower to fit on the lawn, but otherwise, they're exactly the same size, yes. So on the lowest level, there is the garage that you drive straight in, with the stairway leading up to the main floor. The mechanicals are down here. And then in the back is a family room that, that can walk out to that patio.
And the units were meant to be sold, correct?
Yes, homeownership, yes.
And what's the size of this family room here?
Roughly, approximately 10 by 20. But they're sort of extra family rooms. There's, there's living space as a main room.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, okay. So once you come up that stair onto the main level, there's a kitchen, wide open kitchen with an island. Basically, the whole floor plan is wide open. So you have your living dining area, a half bath, and the kitchen. And on the third floor or the upper floor, again, you come up to a central hallway with a full bathroom, laundry room, and master bedroom in the back and another bedroom up in the front.
Any of these units, ADA accessible?
They are not.
None of them are?
No.
And we have, we have a total of 11 plus a house, 12, and none of them are accessible, right?
Correct.
And two bedrooms is the maximum?
No, the one, the single-family home is a three bedroom. Otherwise, they're all two bedroom.
You know, Peggy, it'd be nice if the board could get plans like this, something, so we can look ahead of time. I, I went down to a Mary, to a Mary today, and there was no plans even in our folder. You know, I, I like to see, I, I want to know what questions I want to ask. Not when I get here and I have to look at this. I want to be able to look at them in all. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, and typically...
This is a big thing that I have to just say, one, two, three, yeah, let's do it.
No, typically, we always supply the plans, but this time, we weren't quite ready and we wanted to get any...
Then you shouldn't have come this week if you weren't quite ready.
Chuck, how big is this lot?
30,000, is it? Is it 3,950, I believe it is?
Yeah, 36.
It's, uh, yeah, I got 30,950, thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions of the architect?
I have no questions.
Mr. Kellman? You have no more?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for those in favor. We'll open it for those opposed. Is there anyone here opposed? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Is there anyone here opposed? Hearing none, we will close the hearing for those opposed. We will close the hearing. What is the wish of the board? Motion has been made to grant.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Curly?
Can, is there a weight of post stipulation on this for now?
Pardon me?
Is there a weight of post stipulation? So we need to see some elevation on the, on the drawings? Well, at least I have... Yes. Because that's one criteria that we need to follow. Currently, it's not, it's not a, it's not a trial receipt today.
But the, these are just schematic drawings, these aren't...
I understand.
They're, they're construction documents. In the building department, we'll see the full set of construction documents.
So what, what are you looking for exactly?
The height of the elevation.
The elevation?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that it's, it's appropriate? Then I, we put it as a stipulation that before, before this, well, we can vote on this night, but we have to have an ele, we have to have elevation drawing to distribute to the board prior to this being approved. Not approved, but before the decision is being issued. Okay? Can you do that?
Sure.
All right, so that's a stipulation? Well, elevation will be submitted prior to the petition. What's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, but you know what I'm saying. After the appeal period...
Before.
Before it's, before it's been approved, technically. I mean, we're voting on it, but you know what I'm saying. Before the...
The letter of decision?
Before the letter of decision, thank you. That's perfect. Before the letter of decision is issued, we'll see an elevation. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Ms. Curly, to grant the stipulation?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Kellman?
Yes. Okay, the next case is 9912, 34 Copeland Road. Petitioner Albert DiVigilio to allow the construction of a detached shed, 16 by 24, on the side yard of a single-family home in an R1 district. The hearing is now open for those in favor. Mary, who's the Wood sitting on this case? Yep.
Good evening, my name's Albert DiVigilio, 34 Copeland Road, Lynn, Massachusetts. And just looking to put a detached garage on the side of the property. Scale's a little different, ended up being... Plenty of side setbacks, um, front and back. Here's some photos of the property. It's a garage.
Excessively built, about it.
Correct.
Right, because it says a shed. That will have to be corrected.
Yeah, it's, well, it's a, yeah, it was, the shed was actually as large as the garage. The difference will be the type of footing that is put in.
Garage is under.
The garage used to be under.
Yeah, blocking that.
That's going to become residential square footage, correct?
Yes.
Because that driveway was a little...
Yeah.
That's where they ran into problems there. That's where they had to do the new footings. To the left side of the house, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a steep driveway, wasn't it?
Yeah, they lost the footing on the left side of the house.
Wow, how? Did someone hit it?
Nope, the wash, over the years, in the jacket at City Hall... Nope, the wash, over the years, in the jacket at City Hall, about ten years ago, they dug out the whole garage, redo the footing, and then had to report, and then put a drain in front of the garage doors to hopefully eliminate that. So we're gonna bring that front yard where it was up to grade, make it, the front lawn come all the way across, and then put the driveway to the left side.
Yeah.
It wasn't staked, though. It wasn't staked.
It isn't, it isn't staked, though. The, the last try, no, so we couldn't, uh-
Oh, the property?
No, the garage.
No, where the garage is.
Oh, no, not yet, no, it's gonna be-
I'm sure it is, it's flooded here.
I'm supposed to be able to go out there and see markers where this is gonna be.
Where that would be?
No.
Next time, I'll do it.
Rookie mistake.
Your petition says sixteen by twenty-four.
It's smaller than that.
But this piece of paper says eighteen by twenty-two.
Because I finally had, got the builder to draw it up and tell me how big it would be. Took a while.
Yeah, can I see it? Which one, all right, so this, this is the one that you want?
This is eighteen by twenty-two.
Right.
Sixteen by twenty-four.
That will be, like on the drawing there, that was the one the builder finally did for me yesterday. With the six-foot between the house and the garage, so that will be the walkway and access going to the rear yard.
And then they have less than fifteen feet for the door out, for the accessory door. You have thirteen, yeah, accessory.
Okay. Gets that high, yeah, he drew it.
Yeah.
Why didn't you connect it?
Can I see that?
I didn't want to connect it.
Really?
Yeah, we wanted to do a trellis across the, from the garage to the house, to make that walkway to the rear yard.
Well, that's nice.
And with a nice walkway.
It's nice, but those corn ones, yeah.
I know, I know.
And it needs to, something needs to extend the house, because the yard is so large. It, it goes so far over, it just looks odd.
Get any lands, spot, rents taking in mind.
We're gonna leave all of it that's there now on the left, where that ledge piece is, because that sits outside of thirty feet, and then we'll fill in between the, Megan Balsam and I, where that opening is now, that's just cleared out for some reason. Uh, and we'll probably replant trees there to kind of fill in between the two.
You know your problem.
Too big, right?
Yes, well, we will. It's up, I, it's on our property, but I told her she can decide what she wants to put there, because she has to look at it more than me.
What was your conservation issue?
Alls we were looking for was conservation, it's actually on here, they did it, this, oh, no, it's on the other, it's little dots outside the pool. So, in the back there, that was originally two lots of land, so when Miles O'Brien built Bowridge, they gave all of this accessory land back here over to the neighbors. So Mr. Osceleani dug one five thousand square feet, because the Balsam got about five. And, so what we're doing is we just, we're putting just some footings in so that we can extend the decking and the fence out a little, without touching the topography of the land at all.
I saw the, the local species had occupied, you pulled a couple of nice bullfrogs.
Oh, bullfrogs love it, my daughter named them Henry. This is, um, this is already filled in. So, for point of, of the laugh, this is my ex-wife's house, where she still lives, that is the house I built. So we have a nice little gate here, so we can connect and go visit each other.
There you go.
That's me.
Kids can just walk back and forth.
Your dad is up there, too, right?
Next door. This is where I grew up.
Exactly, what is it?
Right, home, home. Yeah, so I've lived my whole life in a triangle, essentially.
I know, I know.
But that house was available, so we approached them, and they had, my neighbors had passed from growing up, the Osceleanis, so.
Right.
You would have, you should go and see the foundation.
Eighteen by-
Eighteen by-
Did you see where it split?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, the hydraulic-
Eighteen by twenty-two.
Yeah.
So the water just kept running in, into it?
Well, since it kept going and washed it out, and we got-
Why didn't they, like, redirect it if they saw all those years?
I don't know if they saw it.
Oh, really?
And then the, the foundation split in half.
It goes through.
So we had a crack excrement and repen it and hydraulic cemented. This has been interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, um, any other, other questions of the petitioner at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Speak in favor, anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for those in favor, we'll open for those opposed. Is anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing for those opposed, we'll close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Moved to grant the petition.
Second.
Motion made by, to grant by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Callen, please call the roll.
Mr. Wood, to grant?